Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to call South County Council of Labor meeting for July 27th. Please stand for the invitation and remain standing for the next reading.
Let us pray. Our dear kind heavenly Father, we do thank you for allowing us to come together again to do the business that you have appointed for these seven county council members to perform. We invite your presence and ask that you abide with us. We thank you for all the blessings that you have given us over time, especially during this budget period, that we are not having to worry that we are able to do some of the things that we desire to do for the people that we represent. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you would continue to bless our entire nation. We acknowledge that leaders are appointed by you and that everything is moving by your power. It is in you that we live, move, and have our being. And we know that the wars that are going on, that you can see them because you're omnipotent, you're all-knowing, omniscient, and you're all-powerful Father, that you can control and do everything according to your will. We trust your perfect will. We ask that you continue to bless county council, bless our county administrator and his staff, bless all of the citizens, and we thank you for those who saw fit to come and see our local government in action, of us to represent you as they watch us do our jobs. These are all things we thank and ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our present and reading is the life of the United States of America and to the rebelling for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, before I go, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. I need to amend the items that were listed under the new business and the older press. I seem to update them clinically after I send it out last week. Is there any change?
So this is correct.
That is the amendment agenda. Yes, sir.
May the amendment agenda be approved. The movement properly seconded. We approve the amendment agenda. Any discussion pending in all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Agenda approved. Help motion to approve our minutes from June 24th and July 8th.
Second.
The movement properly seconded. We approve the minutes from June 24th and July 28th for the first discussion. Amen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The endless matters are RC number 2509 approved.
This is on. Alright. RC 2509 is a request of 1980 Highway Drive being brought forward by Ms. Adrianne Bolley, a property agent for the property owner. She is here to speak on behalf of the request. It's to move on the cross of Honest Way for carpool from AC to residential 15 in 1980 Highway Drive. This is the tract question, and it stands in the development photography. It sits between a single-family detached lawn to the south and a duplex unit to the north. This is the pattern of zoning, the south of the property immediately to the south of the property and to the west of it is own residential 15, the tracks to the north and to the east of it, or is a metropotual conservation. However, the existing pattern of development to the north of this site on that side of the road that you see zoned AC and planned development, where there are structures, those are actually duplex structures, and they're not single-family homes. For remainder of the development out in that area. The subject property is currently undeveloped and is adjacent to Highway Village in Forest Lake subdivision. The lot is similar in size and shape to other parcels that are on the east side of Highway Drive. And several of these parcels, as I said, have already got duplex development that are not conforming uses in the AC zoning district. Just as a little background, this subject property in part is part of the same property that came before the council in the winter of 2022, beginning of the year around January, February, to rezone it to residential 15. At that time, the request was denied at second reading of public hearing. However, because it has been more than a year since the request, it's actually been more than three full years, the applicant is allowed to come back and ask for the same thing or a different district. In this instance, they are asking to come back with the same zoning district that they asked for in 2022, which is R15 zoning. There was a subdivision done with the property in 2023 where we created 1 acre lot and then 26 acre lot to the north, which has been combined to properties to the north. That is allowed in the AC zoning district, so this was done in compliance with those standards at the time. When we look at rezonings, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. In this case, it is in the suburban development planning area, which is supportive of a mix of residential densities and housing types. So we do find that the request to rezone this property, R15 from AC, is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request based on being in alignment with 2040 comprehensive plan, and that the proposed district is compatible with the existing development adjacent to or enclosed practice. Have any questions that you may have, and we also have Ms. Bolley here on behalf of the request.
Can I ask you to pull up the zoning document? Any questions approved? Okay, prior to second reading of the real help public hearing. Now the trial of the public hearing over. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this resolving request, please proceed to the podium stationed right in front of the left.
I'll speak for the request. Adrianne Bolley, please.
My name is Adrianne Bolley. I live at 3000 West Hampton and Center. I work for Danny Construction. We got denied last year for this because we had a lot of opposition from the community members. I just want to have a chance to get up in front of council and say that the reason why it's important to revisit is because we have an opportunity to put four affordable homes in an area where it's compatible with everything else around it. It's inconformity to what else is there. And the difference that I think wasn't made at our hearing in 2022, I think it was, was that the duplexes that are out there now are actually duplexes. They sit on one parcel and they're sold together. So a lot of the times investors, most of the time investors, she says, those are tenant occupied. Danny Construction wants to build out areas different from what's existing in that we plan to build single-family detached units that will be sold separately to individual, possibly individual owners and owner-occupied. So one of the rebuttals we got last year was that tenants caused problems in the neighborhood. They don't take care of the property and other things. So I just wanted to meet the opposition and say that we're going to sell them separately and that it's more likely that owner occupants will be there. They'll be under $200,000, which is the need, the need to mete our market as far as housing. You don't have much housing available under that $200,000 price range. And we have an option to put four units and serve forfeit money in that area and be conformant to the neighborhood. Right now, as it sits, we can only build one house in Mesa. If you guys approve it, we can put four units out there that can possibly be owner-occupied in the town, which I think is a benefit for our local population. Okay?
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chairman, could I ask one question? Anyone else? Okay.
You're allowed. Is that open now for opposition?
Yes.
Yeah. The last time. My name's Chris Brooks, 2944 Forest Lake Drive, and I'd like to speak in opposition of this resolution. As stated before, this was brought before you and decided on in 2022. The recommendation at the time was for Danny Construction to divide the parcel of 2.65 acres into two lots, to maintain the minimum of one acre for an agricultural lot, which is what the paragraph says, an agricultural conservation lot. The minimum lot size is one acre. I'm not sure how they were able to make a one acre lot, a one acre lot that has the duplex currently on it, and then a .65 acre lot that shouldn't have been allowed, in my opinion, from what I've read. If they had done that, they were told at the time to just build one single-family detached home on the remaining one plus acre that they would divide out. Now that they've divided it into three lots, they're back to try again to put duplexes. You can go on which one, but there are duplexes. In their statement, it says, "The desire to develop property in manner consistent with the nearby residential developments," and just there are duplexes or single-family detached structures. Highway Village and Forest Lake subdivisions have 127 homes in them. None are duplexes. There are six duplexes. They were built between 35 and 40 years ago. None of those are a part of what had been developed over the last 45 years in that area. King's point, the nearest development has 60-plus homes, zero duplexes yet again. No neighborhood near us, is an established neighborhood that I could find, has a single-family detached home in it, period. Danny Construction built four homes in our neighborhood in 2021, R15 lot property, and built them consistent with the neighborhood. They built single-family detached homes. They are currently constructing one single-family detached home in R15 property. I'm baffled as to what's so important about putting two more duplexes wedged into one lot that is the bare minimum of what it should be for one single-family detached home to put a duplex in, and then one lot that is not large enough for a home to be put in, period. I'm sure that several other residents will speak on the effect that it would have on home values. I respect the fact of having a lower price point for a home to come into the neighborhood. That's wonderful. But I'll go out on a limb without having done the research. There is not a home in Forest Lake subdivision that I live in that is valued for less than $200,000, period. It's not similar to what we have at all. Thank you.
In response to that, yes, none of the subdivisions near there have duplexes, but there are duplexes there, and that goes to say that it's better to provide different housing products. If we have no other duplexes anywhere near there, maybe we should consider putting a couple in to diversify the demographic down there and provide housing for people that need it, that can afford something over $200,000 but still want to live in the county and new construction. Also, as far as the wedging homes in between two other homes, those lot sizes are congru-- like conforming to what's adjacent to it. We've got, I want to say the adjacent parcels are around 100 foot. We're at 90 on ours. I think one of them, we're at 90 and 80, so we're about 10 foot different. We'll need to step back requirements either way, so it will fit. And we can draw it smaller to fit as well, like the width of the duplexes doesn't have to fit in as the adjacent one.
Good evening. My name is Carolina Richardson, and I live on Highway Drive. I've lived there for over 20 years. And yes, when we bought our property, we knew there were duplexes. Those were there, well-established. I recognize the fact that they're saying it's going to be four family homes, but it's still duplex. If you're going to create one building and just kind of have people live on each side, it's still a duplex. We would prefer no more being added in our neighborhood. I recognize everybody treats property different, but lately, I guess they were all owned by someone else before. Within the last few years, they've been sold to new owners. And I encourage you all to come out and see for yourself. But now, some of the owners, the folk are not even mowing the lawn for some of the duplexes. And like I said, they were already there and established, so we knew that. But we certainly would not like to have any more added there. And I really don't see how they're going to put on some of the lots that are there. I know they may be have been divided across their lines, but if you all haven't viewed the property, I encourage you to come out. We're the ones who have to live back there, the people who wanted to build it, does not live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Sherry Phillips. I live at 1950 Highway Drive. In response to what Ms. Carolyn said, the properties that she's talking about not being maintained are actually owned by Danny Construction. And I've got pictures, I brought pictures of how they look, and they are horrible. He didn't actually cut the grass on one of them all summer long until he posted this sign about this meeting. The trash never gets taken in. I've had, we maintain the brick sign that says, "Our subdivision, Forest Lake, me and my mother, we keep that brick wall with the flower bed and the grass cut." And I have to pick up big TV boxes and trash where they don't. I've knocked on their doors and told them, "It's not in the trash can. Trash truck won't pick it up." And we're constantly picking up their trash, and they still don't put it in there. And I've called Danny Construction, their rental department, and told them multiple times, there is a mailbox that is literally leaning into the ditch, being held up by a tree that fell. All the stumps of the tree is piled around the mailbox. I don't know how the coastal people are delivering the mail because it is leaning and being held up by this tree stump around it. And it's been two years now. So I brought my pictures, and in my opinion, before they start building more duplexes, maybe they should tend to the ones that they have and make them look a little better. Because I'm a retired real estate broker. My son now runs the real estate office. I looked up the previous owners and the way they listed when they would rent the properties, the other owners rented their apartments for $775 a month, and they included lawn maintenance in them. Dean is now trying to rent these properties for $900 a month, and there's no lawn maintenance included in them. The one, the very first one, when you turn on the Highway Drive, it's been vacant now. I know for maybe five or six months, and it looks like someone tried to break into it over the last three days because this door on the side of it has been opened. They don't do anything. You call them and tell them how bad it was, they don't come out and do anything. So I don't think any more apartments should be added until they can do something with the ones that they had and maintain them better.
Can I say that, please?
You can pass.
Your reading is... My name is Mary Lawrence Zimmerman. I live at 1800 Highway. And I want to express my strong opposition to proposed housing development in our neighborhood. While I understand the need for affordable housing in our county, I believe that this project would have a detrimental impact on our neighborhood. First and foremost, the proposed development will devalue our property, bring down the property value of existing homes. We recently had a home sale in our neighborhood for close to $400,000. Duplexes will not help and assist our property value. Furthermore, the type of housing being proposed is simply not keeping with the character of our neighborhood. Again, I strongly oppose, and I'm deeply concerned about the impact this development would have on our property value and in the surrounding areas. Also, the developers will become landowners. As our previous persons stated, they are not even taking care of the property that they currently own. And they will become property owners and also devalue our current neighborhood. Again, I strongly oppose this proposed development, and I urge you to reconsider this proposed housing development. While I recognize the need for affordable housing, I believe that this project is simply not right and are not a good fit for our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. President.
I just want to address those two concerns. For the duplexes that are out there, that are tenant occupied, they are duplexes. They're always sold as one unit, and they're sold as one unit because they occupy one parcel. So they end up being tenant occupied. Our goal is to sell these individually, so they will more than likely be owner-occupied. Owner occupants typically take care of their properties better. I also want to say that it's Danny Construction, while we own these properties, we subdate out the property manager, tenant's responsible to take care of lots, but none of us not maintaining it. Also, if we subdivided all of those duplexes, Kings and R15 subdivided those lots, those might be owner occupants too. You could sell those to owner occupants or the tenants, and then maybe they would take care of their property better. So just an argument for reason, any of the other ones, if there are problems tenants out there. The second thing I want to say is that property values have, those duplexes have been out there 30 or 40 years, and their property values have continued to rise in Highway Village and Forest Lake. They just said they're worth $300,000. The duplexes are not comparable, comparable. Appraisers don't look at the duplexes compared to the single-family homes out there, so their values obviously have not been hurt and will not be hurt in the future because of them.
Hi, I'm Christina Parrish. I live at 2933 Lakeview. I just want to say what she said is not true. They may sub out the property manager, but Dean Ginni owns the property management company. So it's still him, me, and you. It may be under a different name, but it's still Dean Ginni. I oppose this simply because we have one way in and out of our neighborhood, and it has to go past those duplexes. So when they're doing construction or doing anything, we have to drive through there. Can't tell you how many times I've gone to a construction site, there's trash, there's nails in the road. It just makes a mess. I have a very expensive car. I don't want to drive through that. And they've got a house that they're building down the street from my house, and they're making a mess down there. So I personally just don't want to deal with it. Thank you.
I live at 1960 Highway Drive.
Say your name for the record.
Donna Minchin.
I'm sorry?
Donna Minchin.
Okay, Ms. President.
I live at 1960, which is right beside the lot where they're wanting to deal with the housing. And must have been a couple of months ago, they dropped the porta potty. I mean, at the back, they put it right there, so every time I opened my door, that's what I saw. I have a pool and a fence, so once they build that, literally, they will be like this to my house. And I just really wish they wouldn't know that duplexes are happening.
Hi, I'm Sharon Sisson. I live on Redline Ridge, so I live near here. My concern is that I see three instances on tonight's agenda where we're changing residential and we're changing agricultural into residential. I don't see anything changing any agricultural back to residential, and I don't think that ever happens. And my concern is that we keep getting rid of this agricultural land, and I know agriculture doesn't mean agricultural. You could explain that to me, Ms. Ellen. I think that name needs to be changed. While it says agricultural, we need to treat it like agricultural. I just think it is protective. Nobody can do that for y'all. So I'm just giving my two cents. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kay Carrier, and I live at 2851 Lakeview Drive. I live just down the street from Ms. Parrish, and I live catty corner to the property that she was referring that's being built right now. And by the way, it's sewn for nonflooding, and DHEB actually has jurisdiction of that because during the 1000, 1000 years, we had a few years, we had, it busted the thing. It was a mess, and we had great flooding. But my husband stood before you a couple of years ago, the last time you were here, and he told you that of his concern when we moved here 19 years ago, there were signs in Sumter that said, "Love where you live." Well, we absolutely love where we live. And there was a gentleman that served on county council, and that was Carol Burr. And Carol worked diligently to keep our neighborhood beautiful and functioning and safe. I concur with the findings of everybody here. My husband, I did not know that Sherry had called. My husband called about a month ago about how the properties, the duplexes that are owned by Danny Ginni have been left in disrepair. I worked for a property management company 25 years ago in central Florida, where we moved up here. We either, it was either been the owner's contract that they maintained, that they provide professional lawn care service, or it was a tenant contract that they provided lawn care. And if they didn't, we would send somebody out, and they would be sent the bill for that to their business. Rectification for that. My husband told you that he, my husband will be 75 years old next month. He is not in the greatest health, and he told you that he, when we purchased this house, it was to be able to take care of me at some point. I'm the wife that he spoke of, that he asked you to protect the, not to allow to read something. Jenny Burr's stepbrother, he's said my husband's wife twice in the last couple of years. And we've got two widows standing, sitting back here tonight. And for this affordable housing, yes, absolutely needs to happen to reset my neighborhood to be able to do it. No, it doesn't. If you want to choose that, if you choose to do that this evening, you will. I would respectfully request that you add a budget line item for trash pickup. I've never lived anywhere where people just use the side of the road as though it is their personal trash can. But the problem is off the chain in the area outside our subdivision and within our, when you first pull into our subdivision. We, as a community, get into trash pickup. We maintain our ponds and keep them sprayed. We will need somebody from code enforcement to come out to make sure. Yes, you can say, "We need affordable housing." I'm telling you that it will not be owner-occupied. You can look at the statistics. There were probably less than a 50% chance of that happening. And we're not having a lot of good luck with the people that have, for the people that have assumed ownership of the duplexes. My husband can't be here tonight, and I'm just asking you, please respectfully. Carol can't be, Carol Burr can't be here tonight, but he would respectfully ask you, as other people would, and Carol would ask you to protect his property value, former property. Anyway, thank you very much.
That's what Ms. Kay said. Donna's the first house on my side. She lives right beside the property. I live right beside Donna, and that's the main road coming in. You get to our house, me and Donna are probably the two youngest people on this side of our neighborhood. Everybody past there are elder people, elderly people. And on my side, I look out for a lot of the people. Mr. Weeks can't drive. Ms. Overstreet don't get out. We have a lot of people that we have to look out for. Chris looks out for everybody on his side of the neighborhood, which Ms. Louise, I have to take her Friday morning to get her hair done at 7:00 in the morning. We have a lot of older people that we take care of. The apartments, they obviously don't tell those people that they're not part of Forest Lake subdivision. Between my mother and my grandmother, for 50 years, they have maintained the public access on the ward. My mother keeps all that line cut. My mother keeps all that line cut. Chris is taking over, keeping the dam maintained and the grass cut. You don't know how many times I've had to start taking over because I told Mom, you're getting here. You're just, you're just getting up in age. Don't go confront people in cars over there. I go over there. I have to go over there and run people off on a weekly basis. I have to go over and ask them, and ask where you live. Do you live in the neighborhood here? They say, "Yeah, I live around the corner." I say, "I need an address. I need to know, which address do you live at?" And then they want, they want to get a little argument, and when they get like that, they know, "We don't live in the neighborhood." So I have to go run them off and tell them they have to leave. "Well, I live over here at, you know, the apartments." It doesn't matter just because they're on this side of that brick wall doesn't mean you have rights to the ponds over here. Because they leave beer cans and bottles and fishing line, things that Mom, Mother's lawnmower does. She doesn't get out there and pick it all up and clean it all up. So they just don't have no respect when they rent around here and have to move in and make a mess. And then we have these upcoming, we have to look out for, so we don't have to deal with it.
Again, Mary Harts, Zimmerman, eighteen hundred Highway. Um, one thing that I forgot to mention, which, uh, for, um, former residents is mentioned, is our pond. And, um, our, um, envi, and our environment. Um, building in this area would destroy our natural habitat and putting our wildlife at risk. On many occasions, many mornings, I have the pleasure of seeing deers at our pond because they live in that particular area. So again, I'm absolutely opposed to this, this argument. Thank you.
Public hearing, please. I, I got a few questions for Helen, I guess. We, it is strange, because we just sat back there in, in committee meeting, and we're talking about townhouses and duplexes. She's saying that she's going to sell the duplexes. Are they going, I thought you said they couldn't sell the whole unit.
As you'll remember, I said that there is a distinction that makes a difference.
So these are townhouses?
The difference between a single-family attached product and a duplex is that a single-family attached product is divided into two pieces where each sits on its own fee simple lot, and one side can be sold independently of the other. Duplex units have to be sold as a singular structure, and they are on one singular lot. And as Ms. Moley said, those more often than not become investment properties because there are very few people that want to live on one side of a duplex and rent out the other.
But I thought, are these townhouses or duplexes? That's where I'm confused.
If the property is successfully-
If Dean Ginni sells half of this-
The units that exist out there now, from a building code standpoint, are in fact a duplex. They are not divided by property lines. They don't have the firewalls between them to create these simple lots between the two.
So the new ones that are going in, are they going to be, have firewalls?
If, if the property is successfully rezoned, there would be a conditional use review that lays out that it would be single-family attached units. They would have to be built in conjunction with building code where there are appropriate fire-rated walls so that the properties can be subdivided legally into left and right as their own independent lots.
But once we rezonate, they could either do duplex or they could do a townhouse.
No, once they rezonate, they can only do single-family attached or a single-family unit. Duplexes are not allowed in our existing zoning district. So they would have to be fee simple units.
And last of all, I've been fishing out there. Carol Burr was one of my dear friends, and, uh, be hard for me to.
Now, now understand, if the property is not rezoned, the one acre piece to the south can still be constructed upon it, just would have to have a single family dwelling on it.
Oh, what, what, what is the, the planned unit development up there?
That is an old, old, old PD that no longer-
Yeah, I didn't even see this PD. Oh, I mean, is there a house there?
There are duplexes on that property.
Oh, where the PD's at?
Yes.
Those are duplexes?
Yes, sir.
Helen, the applicant stated four units. Is the land enough land to afford units?
Uh, yes, sir.
No, no, no.
And yes, single-family attached units, there would be from a dimensional standpoint. Now, whether or not, whether or not the property itself perks to accommodate four septic tanks is not something that I can answer.
Don't you have to have one acre per duplex?
Please, please, let me speak. All right, so, um, hear me out for you to react this time, please. Okay. So I don't, I just agree with some of the, some of that the opposition says about the property and all that. Um, these are new houses, I don't think they're going to have anything to progress. However, you know, I'm going to do an argument favor. Uh, statement, who was there first? Now, I'm friends with Dean Ginni and them two as well. I still think it's a good fit, because, you know, especially in neighborhood, I feel, I think they should have some saying, well, those in the neighborhood are just right next door. Okay? Now, and I'm not, you know, if I notice, I'm very, very subtle against a rezoning. That's not me. Their property was, do what they want with, that's their right. But unfortunately, this case, I see the same almost three years ago.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. Remember, the planning commission recommendation comes from a technical review-
Yes, yeah.
-of the policy documents. It does not come with personal opinion from planning staff or from the commission. So this public hearing is doing exactly what we need it to do, which is hear from the community.
And you understand, but you know how I work.
Yes.
And I understand, thank you, it's a big other job, and I agree. I was in thinking, I would recommend approval. However, when you hear from residents, you get a different picture. So, um, right now, how council feels, but right now, I have another question.
Probably a lot of things. Charles? Um, if you go back and tell me, you say it's already been subdivided, and one of the lots is six acres. As is now, it's AC, how pretty has been subdivided?
So what I will tell you is, you see that visual to the north? Uh, it should have been combined to the tract to the north, which is what planning commission and planning staff reviewed. So based on that flat drawing, that one acre piece and that one acre piece were fine. And then that six, point six acre, point sixteen should have been combined with the tract to the north. This came up yesterday when we did a deeper dive. Um, and we've had conversations with the mapping office of the county to try and understand why that did not happen. And so fundamentally, if this property is not successfully rezoned to R-15, that will become an unbuildable lot that we will not be able to issue permits on unless they are successful at getting variances through the water zone. It's not that one.
They can combine it with the other.
They can combine it with-
And then subdivide that and have, and have more than one acre. A house in the two, right?
Yes. There is an existing house in the middle, yeah.
I see that now.
Yeah. So the, the point six eight acre is going to be an administrative issue. The staff is going to have to rectify that this came up as we did the deep dive into why did this happen?
Is that the purpose of R-15 because of the size of the lot?
R-15 does a lot smaller lot sizes, yes.
Is that the purpose of the rectification?
Yes.
The, the property in question is southernmost one acre lot.
For this request. Uh, there is another request right after this. It's basically identical to what we've just gone through. Uh, I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say that the community will have the same issue with those lots. Um, but yeah.
What's the pleasure of council?
Well, I'd like to comment that, um, I think the planning commission should have done a deeper dive. But I'm in agreement with where councilmen from Pinewood, um, in, in the infringement and the potential, um, for property values. But in my opinion, planning commission should have done a deeper dive at the beginning. But that's just my take on it.
Ginni, is only now back up one more time? Property is southernmost of R, the one lot is already R-15.
No, nothing on this case is R-15. It currently is.
At that point, and the yellow one is all over this one.
Is R-15.
Is R-15. So if they had just come and asked for a rezoning of R-15, they would want to put one house on, they'd put one house on.
Correct.
They came and told us exactly what they want to do.
Correct.
And I could get credit for that, anyway, to be honest with you. They could have done, and just made a single R-15 lot, like one of them, precisely, in the case of, you know, I agree with the duplex. I know the neighborhood, and I agree with Russ, I live there. Wish the other one would be going too.
In the name of my late friend Carol Burr, I'm going to deny this. I'll need a motion.
Second.
Is there a motion to deny second reading?
Second.
On the second, any further discussion? We have a motion, another second, to deny second reading, all in favor, denied. Can you say aye?
Aye.
All votes. Second reading is denied. RZ twenty-five ten.
Uh, and so RZ twenty-five ten is in nineteen ninety-two Highway, which is a lot immediately to the north of the existing duplex. This is fundamentally the same request that we just heard on, on the lot to the north. Uh, so this is the first one question, but the biggest difference being that it does not actually directly abut any R-15 zoning. Um, it abuts AC to the north and to the south. And again, this is part of that request that in twenty-twenty-two was denied for rezoning. As I previously stated, when the plat was done in twenty-twenty-three, we would be understanding that piece of the north was being combined to a parcel to the north. Um, as we started doing some more digging, after some questions came out after planning commission, one of the reasons this didn't come up while we were doing our background research was because the lot had been subdivided, the parent parcel number was gone. So the way that we track previous cases is through the parent parcel, so it didn't catch it until late in the game, my apologies. Um, but again, from a policy standpoint, this is in the suburban development planning area, which does support rezoning for diversification of housing type. So planning commission does recommend approval of this request based on it being in compliance with the twenty-fourty comprehensive plan and with the, um, existing pattern of development. Has the answer any questions that you may have?
Right, take the second readings, we'll have a public hearing on this one as well. Public hearing is now over. Anyone wishing to speak for her, yes, but she's on the east west.
My name is Chris Brooks, two-nine-four-four Forest Lake Drive. Um, as, as a note, we all wanted to slide that's not up there, is that their intent was to combine the parcel that is not large enough to be an agricultural conservative lot with the lot next door, and then devise those two to make them into R-15. The next lot is only point eight two of an acre. And if you look at the actual slide, it shows the house sits almost virtually on the property line. There is no adding to make this wider. This lot is right now to be zoned, that they request rezoned to R-15, is eighty-five feet wide. The minimum for R-15 is one hundred feet, plus your setbacks with your twelve feet, which means your frontage of the house is going to be sixty feet wide. That, it, you, I don't know how that's going to look in some neighborhoods, but I know how it's going to look in our neighborhood, and it's not going to look good. Um, I don't, again, it's the same kind of, I don't want to say arguments, but kind of thoughts and feelings as before. But this lot, one, never should have, I just personally purchased some acreage behind my home. My home actually sits on a lot. It is agricultural conservative. I just bought light-minded property, had it combined, so I knew what that meant, what they were trying to do. But it doesn't make any sense, and it isn't large enough for a home to even be built on. Even as an R-15, even if it's approved to R-15, R-15 states one hundred feet width. So you can't, even if you approve it, it can't be built on. And that's really all I have on that one.
I think I speak, again, Carolina Richardson, Highway Drive, nineteen seventeen sixty. I think I speak for the rest of my neighbors that our contention is the same on this parcel as it was on the first one. We still feel the same way about it. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Adrianne Bowling, West Kansas Avenue, Sumter. Just wanted to say that this one, um, one difference really to make an argument for is it does sit in between two duplexes and does not, um, but against a single-family residential. Um, and we were going to request a variance for that, uh, to put that duplex or single-family attaching there, still sell separately. Um, but we could narrow it to meet the setback, so it won't look squeezed in.
Seeing no one else, public hearing is closed. Pleasure, council.
Come on for the deny.
Second. We're moving property second definitely deny second reading, RZ twenty-five ten. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of denying second reading, please, aye. Aye, all votes. Second reading is denied. RZ twenty-three, twenty-five oh eight.
Good evening. Helen, ready for her planning staff. RZ twenty-five oh eight is at twenty-eight twenty-five Camden Highway. Uh, the request is Vanessa Simmons, the property owner. The request is to rezonate approximately three point two six acres, um, of the parcel from agricultural conservation to general residential. That is what was advertised. As you'll notice, I get through the request, it actually got first reading to rezonate to R-15, but because the legal out went, went out before first reading, it was advertised basically. Uh, this is the tract in question. It is a singular three point two six acre parcel. Uh, it is currently, um, has one structure at the very back of the property, and it is of agricultural conservation. It abuts R-15 to the east, and across the street is Residential Nine. Uh, the request was originally to rezone to General Residential, but it is now to rezonate to R-15. Um, I'm going to look up here because my glasses don't work at this angle. Uh, at first reading, council recommended approving it at R-15 zoning, not at General Residential. The applicant originally stated that their desire was to construct duplexes on the property, which would require the lot to be zoned to GR. However, um, after discussion of planning commission with the applicant, they were unmitigated to going to the R-15 zoning district because it does allow them additional density without, um, the same restrictions as the AC zoning district. Um, available data indicates that there is public water available at that property, but not public sewer, so anything that is constructed would have to be done in compliance with the HECS standards for septic systems. So that will have a limiting factor on density. Um, and then there are no site developed or subdivision plans that were submitted either for GR or for R-15 zoning for us to evaluate. But based on our professional opinion, looking at the dimensioning and the amount of public growth furnished that's available there, a couple of units could be subdivided off of the Camden Highway frontage without constructing any new roads, leaving a parcel to the back of the property. If they wanted to do more than that, they would actually have to do a major subdivision and construct a road through the side of the parcel, which would be a different review process, but R-15 would potentially allow that as well. Then you're talking about major subdivision development similar to what you could see on our adjacent properties. We looked at the rezoning, uh, we looked at comprehensive plan designation in this case. It is in the northernmost portion of the residential, um, suburban development planning area, but it is adjacent to the military protection planning area. Based on that, it is influenced by the policies of both. And within the military protection planning area, we look at densities greater than one unit per acre, meaning that large plots of land, limited number of houses, so when we get closer to that edge, we look at slightly higher densities, but the limiting factor in that area would be, in fact, the availability of the sewer service. Uh, the comprehensive plan in this area, when we look at all those policies in concert with each other, is more supportive of an R-15 zoning as opposed to R-nine or GR. Planning commission did recommend approval of the request to rezonate this to R-15, um, and then county council did concord at first reading. Has the answer any questions?
Maybe I didn't hear, but are they going to have, I know the property is, are they going to have one driveway going in to all the-
We do not have a development plan for it right now.
Can they do that?
Uh, if they did a major subdivision development, they would have to build a road that meets county road standards and-
So how about if they put one, two, three, four units?
Each lot has to have public growth frontage, so they would have to divide- Each lot has to have public growth frontage, so they would have to divide it based along the frontage on Camden Highway.
How much frontage do they have?
Did not measure it off the top of my head.
I'll find again, though.
Quick and dirty. Probably looking at about three, two hundred fifty, depending on the growth frontage.
Right, taking second reading. We will have a public hearing on this as well. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
My name is Maggie Bell, and I live at twenty eight forty five, which is just adjacent to this property. We bought our house five years ago. Obviously, we were looking at somewhere where there was land. There's not a lot of that here. And we didn't have a bunch of neighbors on either side of us. There were one neighbor on each side. It was bad enough that we ended up with backyard neighbors, but we didn't have neighbors on either side, which is what we were looking for. We have dogs, so which will probably pose a problem if they build a bunch of houses next door. My dogs may become a nuisance. We were there first. I don't feel like it should be, you know, something that we should have to argue over or whatever. I feel like it could also potentially lower our public value because we are AC. Most of us out there on that side of Camden Highway are on more than an acre. So we do have, you know, even right across the street, that's military zone. So they have to have at least an acre to go there. So it's just more like preserving the land and acreage and not having somebody around on top of us.
Anyone else?
Hey, I'm Robert Bell. My concern is, like she said, my animals, wives love animals, and that's why we got some, with some acreage to it, you know, so animals can run around. My next thing is everywhere that I've ever seen them really build housing developments, they always build that land up. And which at the end of the room, I don't know, but at the very beginning of Camden Highway, if you look, you turn on it, coming toward our house, they built that land way, that house right beside them where they stopped. I mean, they got a wall with dirt and, you know, just washed down adjacent to the other property. And I, I don't care for that because if they do that, how high are they going to build up? What's the runoff going to be towards my property again? That's something I don't care for. And I just don't see where there's no room there to build three, four, five houses. That's about it. That's the one voice.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
Listen, Chairman, I just have a question. To Mr. Blue. The proposed, that the proposed list to build a duplex on this, about this damn highway.
If you don't have a development plan, your original request was to go to GR to do duplexes. If it is rezoned to R fifteen, single family attached would be a possibility, but we're back to that piece of the lot issue that we were talking about before. But I really don't have a development plan from the applicant, so at this point it is rezoning.
And I, and I understand the residents who already live there. I understand the apprehension. And I, I think we, you know, it came up in our community meeting about the berm. That's what he's talking about. But that, that berm was, I think, a request from somebody that was during that time.
I'm, I'm not certain of which berm he's talking about because the berm that's part of each forest is much further south. So if he's talking about one right here, I'm not sure what that is. But we, we personally, from a planning standpoint, generally are not fans of berms. We want them constructed so that they are stable and they do not have runoff. And then that is all evaluated as part of this stormwater management plan for a major subdivision. But if this, unless, unless they go the major subdivision route, we likely wouldn't be looking at any stormwater management issues because it would be on a lot by lot basis, where they're constructing structures based on existing road frontage.
So, so in the general residential, what are the parameters that the, a developer would have to keep? You know, that would be, you know, you've heard from the public tonight, that would be more appeasing to the residents who are already in there.
So as you'll recall, this is actually a request to go to R fifteen, not general residential.
I see that's, you know, that's scary.
Yeah. So general residential are most intense residential zoning district, which allows the highest density. R fifteen is our least intense residential zoning district, where the minimum lot size for a single family dwelling is fifteen thousand square feet with a minimum lot furniture of a hundred feet for a single family dwelling. Because going to an alternate residential housing type, those sizes vary. However, in the county, the dependent factor in lot size ends up being how much land is necessary for a septic tank and the fifty percent repair area. And so generally, for a single family structure, I don't know the numbers on single family attached to duplexes. But for a single family structure, an optimal lot size is around twenty two thousand square feet in area, which will allow you room for structure, accessory structures, your septic tanks and drain lines and the required repair area.
Without the road, you could probably cut six of them. Well, once you put the road in, you take it away, so you might get four.
You could go homes there now. You could go home, yeah, you could go homes there now.
It could be subdivided because we're singular lots, like a concrete three manufacturer.
That's, it'd be better if they could have houses there, some little homes there, that's a small, you know, because they're going to be living anyway. So I think the opposition needs to be aware of that. If you could put the zoning map back up, it is zoned as AC now, which doesn't allow more homes. So they could put three facing the street now. They could cut that into three long lots, three mobile homes.
And the four mobile homes are R fifteen.
Zone R fifteen.
R fifteen is not allowing a structure now.
They can go house. They may get four of those. I think that'd be about the most at the lowest. And once you put a road in, you're picking away a lot.
I'll be honest, I don't think the numbers work. To put a road in, I don't think that's about my.
No, he's a villain. I'll be there in one couple. I've been, I've been no product for that. It'd be a large A lot. It would be really very deep to take out a roof. I guess things would be zoned better once you have a house. Because you could go home there now versus some state of house in the future.
I wish I had time, I should have. I didn't consider all of these options. I wish I had. I mean, I can go back on the computer and draw very close to my thinking, maybe I was accurate. A lot size and what you've got to have. Like you say, you have to have at least half a big lot, so at least. You know, half the thing. With the sewer, you have a septic tank, you will have to go at least there. And then once you take out a road, unless you don't put the road down, boom. And like, I still don't think you can get any more than four.
I think three, I think three at max. And you can do three now with no homes versus three houses.
And like I said, I don't think it's worth it from a, with the paper, it's going to cost infrastructure to pave that street for three lots.
I, I do not see that.
So I think it's back to.
And the folks who are opposing it, they need to understand that right now, with us doing nothing, they can be three mobile homes put in there.
Rental mobile homes.
Rental.
We wouldn't mind seeing with three houses. We just don't want a whole development.
We want to try to protect y'all. With this zoning, I think it will help you.
Yeah, I mean, I could, like, like she said, if it's two, two, three houses, it's cool, but I just don't want what they building behind Walmart.
You know, and then, and then where somebody's back to our neighbor and our dogs are barking at them all night.
I've seen the big old white.
Yeah, just the wall and the sun.
I mean, if you were to do two or three houses, I have no argument on that. And maybe they could put a privacy that's up between us or something.
That is from what you said, going on behind Walmart. They have city sewer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's small lots.
Well, all the questions and everything, you know, it makes sense. What my colleagues are saying and also what the residents are saying, you know, and we just satisfied us one set of residents. And so we want to make sure that the people who live there are not being imposed on. Just want to make sure.
Yeah, but I, I clean up a can. I'd like to make a motion that we require the owner to come back in here and break us up.
Now, that, that makes sense. We need to know what it, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I'm not saying that.
I, I would, I would caution you against making that a condition of the rezoning.
This is the rezoning. I'm making a motion to approve second reading. You have a motion to approve second reading.
I'm on second after, but I'm going to go back and draw it. See what I guess they can do. We still have one more read. Yeah, I'll wait.
I understand that we can't legally mandate it. But just to follow up on the councilman from Wilson Hall's comment, can we request it? A request is not a mandatory.
We can request it after we pass. There's only requests or not. You have to prove it or not.
But we still have third reading.
We still have third reading.
This is chairman. Can we defer it? And during the fervent request it?
That's simply.
And that may be a legal question for counsel.
It's a, previous situation, you start adding requirements for one application, one applicant, if you don't have your order. You've got equal protection. You start creating one applicant differently from the other applicant by imposing a requirement. On this applicant, not rezoning. I advise.
Well, I would like to defer just to, just to see the width of the lot and see how many homes can go in. I think that's, that's a determinant.
Second reading.
But I want to see the numbers of how many homes. And I don't think y'all want double wives going in there right now. So I think let's look and see how many homes go in there.
It just kind of seemed like they would have brought that up with them.
Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Second reading is passed. Ordinance number twenty five ten thirty one, airport route.
Mr. Chairman, this is public hearing on the ordinance twenty five ten thirty one. And I ask for you to put up the air photograph that shows two parcels, one of which is forty nine. Southern Warcoaster, it's about four point nine acres. As it stands. Yes, it's the one in Florida. There you go. Four point nine one acres. And we're trying to. An awful war came and asked about buy it. It property that was acquired for crystal constructing. The second name holds the crystal lake of course, but it's not important for the operation of the all course. It looks like we can settle without any impact on the recreational value of crystal lake of course. Taking questions before public hearing.
Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this rezoning request? Ordinance, I'm sorry. Please proceed to the forty. And our public hearing is closed. Sorry. Remove the property second that we approved. Second, second reading?
Yes.
All in favor, please say aye. Ordinance number twenty five ten thirty two, Mayesville.
Chairman members of council, you had first reading on Tyler Hungley, and now you've got the proper order for you. And the real gist of this ordinance is in the second where it has a clause. It talks about the language sent to D from the county based to the county of Sumter. It states that the property belonged to the county for Sumter's successors and assigns. So long as it is used for housing firefighting equipment under the supervision of the Florida Rural Park Control of South County. This specific understanding and agreement that should be useful to property specified. The abandoned for a period of one year, then the property shall automatically, without further action, revert to the grantor. As Mayesville, the successor of the sign, you know. That factors occur, so technically the property now belongs to that Mayesville. All we're trying to do is sign B and record that D is a clear file.
Again.
Remove the property second. Do we have second reading? Any discussion? Hearing none, all, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Second reading passed. Committed reports? I think we have. Move to approve a third reading. Aye. Remove the property second. On the ordinance number twenty five ten thirty one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Committed reports?
We met and discussed, first off, the second off. Second off, we discussed. Okay, we'll go back to first off. First off, we did a zoning district, proposed text amendments. And we directed the plant staff to come back to us and to send it to planning commission, then come back to us on these text amendments. And the second was landscaping standards ordinance. And we had a lot of discussion on things that we think should take place in the county as far as landscape ordinances, mostly for commercial use and requirements that they're asked to do. And we're hoping to lessen some of those requirements in the future. But we've also asked planning to come back with some recommendations to us. I have another meeting we'll go to at that time. And at that time, send our recommendation to plan. And that was all the actions. Send, send, send the planning staff back to the board.
Public works committee?
We met today and we were still discussing our private roads, except, and we're getting near the end. And I'll see if, Mr. Washington, you got anything you want to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman Baker, and thank you, Chairman McCain. And I, I do have some final information that I think is important. Before I get to that, let me just say that the whole reason behind the private roads issue is because in the early nineties, the Sumter County Council decided that they weren't accepting any more roads into the system at that time. And that particularly affected rural residents. Residents that were basically on dirt roads. This council, the folks you see sitting up here, suffered to address that because over a thirty five year period, those roads have degraded to the point that school buses. um, degraded to the point that school buses won't travel them, emergency services have difficulty getting to residents, fire service has difficulty getting to residents, and many residents have health issues that prevent services from getting to them. So in an effort, um, to address that issue, and, um, I want to congratulate and thank all of the council members that sit on this dais at this time, and our county administrator. Um, there is an extreme need to address those issues, obviously, for the reasons that, um, were laid out. And we've spent some serious time trying to figure out how to do that, and of course, stay within the law. And I think we've figured out how to do that, and, um, it's something that the administrator said at the beginning of the process, which is, those roads have to be owned by the county. And so we have now developed a plan, um, to address those roads, and, um, the schedule, um, for implementation will look like this, starting in August, we'll begin to have first, second, and September, the third reading on an ordinance to address this, and of course, the ordinance makes it legal. Following the ordinance process, we'll have what's called a pre-application period, which will be from October to December. Following that, in January, we'll have what's called a county council pre-application review. And the next month, council will begin approving applicants based on the due diligence period. In May, council will make the final approvals. Later in May, we'll have a first, second, and third reading going into June about the amendment ordinance. And then in July, we will begin addressing some of these roads. This has been a very long process, and those of you who live and have lived on these roads for thirty-some years, um, on behalf of council, I want to apologize for what you had to deal with, and ask you to just have a little more patience while we finish implementing the program. And I'll just end by saying it's been a long time coming, but I want to thank my colleagues, county administrator, and those of you who have continued to call not only me, but Ms. McGany, who also has the largest rural district in this county. My district is the largest rural district in the county, there's not one speck of my district that touches the city. Uh, Ms. McGany has the next largest area, and in fact, Chairman McCain has indicated that there are some roads in his downtown district that have the same issue, I know Mr. Bird, you have some, Mr. Baker, you have some, but the most outstanding districts would be, um, the district that I serve and the district that Ms. McGany serves. So I hope that I've given you an update that provides some hope. Um, we're seeing the end of the road, and I would just ask you to stay engaged, keep asking questions, and thank you very much for your patience. Uh, Chairman Baker and Chairman McCain, thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Our reports from county council members. For another meetings.
Not a meeting, but I did attend, um, in my district, um, Friendship, um, Crosswell School is in my area, and we had a block party for Friendship, uh, with our children in the neighborhood, um, the residents of that neighborhood, and we had a good turnout. We were able to show, we had, um, close to twenty vendors on Saturday from ten o'clock until two o'clock. It was a really good event, we got a whole lot of people, so I just wanted to, um, let everyone know that we are, um, reengaged, we are nestled in the community, and we look forward to seeing each of us, others participating in activities in our communities. It's a thank you, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to announce the passing of a very longtime dedicated county employee, our county assessor, Mr. Jimmy Barfield, passed his past Wednesday. Um, Jimmy was actually a thirty-plus year county employee and thirteen year, I believe, uh, as the county assessor. Very well liked, very professional gentleman, and certainly going to be missed, um, but, uh, just, uh, please keep windy and family in prayers. Uh, also would like to announce that Mr. Chuck, Chip Neighbors, is actually what we call Chip, um, will be the interim assessor in this process, as we become the next director. That's all I have to say.
Coming on to the public comment, portion of the last, the, the public is allowed to speak for three minutes. Please address any comments to the chairman, uh, please limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, any questions that you may have will be answered after the public comment is closed, and return, public comment is open. Anyone wishing to speak, council, please proceed to the podium and station, please, put ready.
My name is Deborah Burr, I'm from forty-six seventy, Cotton Lake Road. Um, I wanted to address that council, um, the county representative has been in touch with me, I appreciate her very much. Um, for the last, um, eight years, I've been dealing with the OT. Um, there's two haulsovers and five ditches. I'm, I'm a little overwhelmed, that have been flooding my property. About three feet of water. And they came out to address, um, ditches, but no one wants to address hauls over. These hauls are a lot that's causing the water, especially those last two weeks that we had in June, to back up these four ditch that overflowed to my property. I reached out to Senator Graham, his assistant, Blake, contacted him the first day. I contacted them several times, and no one's calling back. So, um, actually reaching out for help, for someone to address this because it's state roads. I've sent him emails, pictures, and videos, and no one's addressing it. And I guess, um, reaching out for help or wanting to give direction on what needs to be done. Uh, um, met with the engineer, yeah, um, is the Washington D. committed to that so public, thinking what I'm dealing with. Also, the engineer, I think, from the OT, he stated, we're doing this wrong, they told me it's a third thing, it's an over third thing, and no one's contacted me. I'm asking to see what else can be done. This is a, a rural area that's really neglected, I mean, from the roads, getting it, I mean, I moved here from New Jersey after thirty-five years, I've only been on this property for three years. The last year and a half, I've been dealing with this. And the last year and a half, my husband has passed, I've been dealing with this on the phone.
Thank you very much.
Just waiting for someone else to reach out to me and help me with it.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, um, this, this, this property is in Ms. McGany's, uh, council district, and she has visited the property. She asked me to visit the property as well, so I have been on site. The property is so flooded that they have seen alligators on the property, snakes on the property. The backyard had about three feet of water, and it's because the ditches haven't been ditched, the drainage isn't appropriate. And she's been dealing with this for a two-year period, so Ms. McGany and I have decided to also reach out to Senator Graham, but also the new district five highway, um, commissioner, um, to get him involved as well, as well as the house member from this area, which is, um, President Trevon Scott, who just took office, so I suspect that we'll be able to get some folks' attention, but this lady has a very serious, a very serious issue, uh, on her property. Very nice home, very nice land, but that water is just backed up, and we can't even walk the backyard waters, it's, it's really not, it's ridiculous.
Can I ask one question?
It is scary, it is scary. I, um, I also reached out to, um, uh, uh, Mr. Administrator, um, he, he gives us a free range to, um, to contact his employees, and so I reached out to Mr. Conyers for his expertise, and, um, we'll be making contact with him with that storm, the stormwater part of it. And we, we acknowledge that it is a state road, and, um, and we are pressing them for, um, ways that they can alleviate their problem, and, um, and I'm in it to try to help them.
Yeah, can I ask, are you, is, is the property?
Go ahead.
Is the property on the same side of the road that the Cotton Neighbors car wash in Speller, you backed up to that spot back that goes down there?
Inside the farm, it's on, the farm.
She's on the other end, she's over in the cotton.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's on the.
Because I was gonna say, it could be beepers too, and they're something, probably flip.
She is seeing all kind of wildlife, but, you know, the alligators, the alligator takes the case.
They won't let you out of the road.
It is definitely an imminent safety.
And the alligator didn't want to leave.
No, they, they are business, they're the best.
Yeah, you don't want to leave.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hello, my name is Cheryl Jackson, I actually live in the county, three separate classes in a row, but I'm here today because your friend here, Ms. Gordon Bree, we were at the event on Saturday with all our kids. I work with Prisma Help To Me, I am the state kids Sumter County Coroner. And what that means is we want to keep our kids safe, you got my information there. Uh, we just want to let everybody know that we do car seat check, you don't have to go out of the, step out of the city to be taken care of. I have been working at Prisma To Me with the coronator for state kids for sixteen years, and we just want everybody to know that we're there for the, for the families, for these babies, for these children. We want them to grow up, you want them to grow up, I really want them to grow up because I get social security in a little bit, and they have to work. So I just want everybody to be aware that we're here, please don't call Greenville, please call Sumter, I'm at Prisma To Me, you have my card, please reach out to me, my friend, Mr. Joe over there, he sees me at all these events, and we actually were at Shaw Air Force Base today for a back-to-school event there, and we will be out tomorrow, so if you're interested, Bernie Hope Center, the city, the police department is going to be doing a part. An event there for back to.
You teach your class, we'll give someone a ticket, we give them this.
That's me.
They go to your class?
They go to my class.
They're knocking on the foot that all the time?
They drop it down from a hundred fifty-five to thirty-five dollars when they come to class. I actually had somebody in town on Monday night. And so, I mean, it's all about keeping these kids safe, and yes, I get a little fired up with that, but you know, you're gonna know that, uh, we're gonna keep these babies safe. I worked at To Me for forty-four years, and it's all about these babies and these kids. All right, and they.
I gotta get your card.
It's in your packet. So please reach out to me if you see a need, if we need to do anything, we like to help these kids, we want to help these kids. Um, I have good support at Prisma To Me, my director, Elizabeth Patel, is all for safe kids, so is the foundation pays for us to have things. So we're here in the community, please use us, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Hello, I'm Carol Webb, I'm checking the roads. I know y'all are about tired of hearing, but is it ever possible, you could just blade it? Alignments, shocks, struts, is killing us. I mean, it is, even toy is killing us. I mean, it's not, I mean, we're paying our taxes, they just, just blade it, that was.
Mission was that easy.
Mr. Chairman, this is the road where the FedEx guy would not take the packages down, they tie them on the tree.
I, I know.
At the intersection, just that easy.
And the paramedics would not come back.
I'd drive and blade myself.
On Saturday, and the paramedics, they couldn't come back on Saturday to get a eighty-eight year old. And when they finally got back there, was nothing they could do together, because they was on foot.
A lot of that October.
Working on it. State won't allow us to do it as well.
Let me try.
I can tell you that's why I took this issue on, and that's why I thank this council for going down this road to try to help people just like you, because that is what government is for.
Yeah, we, we waiting, we trying.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Jackson, thank you.
I'm sorry, what's that?
My name is Jackson, thank you. I'm off a, off a drive, so we don't really, the road that I come in, off a, off a road, we come through my neighbor yard, so we don't really have a road to get onto my house. So we have to cut through a yard to come on down the road to get to my house. So nobody has cleared that road, it's pretty open, so we don't even get nobody to come over that two square yard to get in from neither hand. So we're trying to see whether we get some help to get the kids on that side of there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Public comment is closed.
We're for German.
I'm moving back to second. All in favor?
Aye.